We will call the regular session of Carmel Clay Schools Board Meeting to order. It's 7:00 PM. Madam Secretary, roll call please.
Board member Leda Spenberg is not here. All other members present.
Thank you. Please join us for the pledge. We are going to be led by the Carmel Education Foundation Co-Executive Directors Barb and Stephanie. I want to start out by welcoming and thanking all of our families and staffs that are here this evening. Tonight, we have a number of special presentations, a few business items, and two special reports. After each presentation, we will take a photo of that group, so when you're recognized, please stay up here for that photo. After all the presentations, we will allow those that need to get home to do homework to do so, but I will encourage all the adults, parents, and staff. We're going to have two very special reports that I would encourage you to stay for, and one will be on the impact of e-cigarettes and students. So with that, we have a potential to adjust the agenda, so I'm looking for a motion, please.
I make a motion to move the report on, sorry, e-cigarettes and impact on students before the tutorial on new education operations funds and monthly financial update.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? No? All in favor of adjusting the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Thank you. Motion carries. Onto the presentations. We have a number of very special presentations, and thank you all for coming. First presentation is Mrs. Kathy Olson. I'll let her tell you guys why she's here.
All right. Good evening. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for having us back. I am here as the principal of Collegewood, and I have with me Mrs. Jacey Schneider, and Jacey has done it again. We are back because she is putting out some fantastic academic bowl teams, and we are blessed to be the Math Bowl state champions for 2019.
Good evening, and thank you for inviting us once again. This year's competition, like every year, was academically intense. Each year, I continue to be amazed by the math bowl team members' ability to accurately solve challenging problems underneath the time constraints. How cool is it that yet again, we all get together to celebrate the academic achievements of three Carmel Clay schools? I think that's great. We got the chance to do that with Spell Bowl, and here we are again with the top three finishes in the Math Bowl, and I just think that's totally awesome. It is so cool to be so smart. It's so fun. And although not all of the elementary schools are here this evening, I think it's really important to note, too, that at the state level, all of our elementary schools performed very well. So there's just a lot of great stuff coming from our young people, and it's just so exciting to see. So I have the chance to introduce my state championship Math Bowl team. So when you guys hear your name, come on up, and we will have an award for you. We'll start with Anjali Bodhaki. Maeve Boland. Kevin Cow. Purvi Dosh. Siri Gouda. Emma Hu. Ethan Jay. Akil Joyce. Akshat Cannon. Arush Patil. Jayen Segal. Amay Sharma. Allison Shen. Ivy Wei. Annie Zhao. Taylor Juong. Once again, your state champs in the Math Bowl.
Well, hi there. Thank you, guys, for having us tonight. It's always just a special time to be able to be here and celebrate the accomplishments of our students. A big shout-out to Jennifer Shuhai and her team at West Clay for hosting the Math Bowl. Those are always a big undertaking to have so many students and families coming into our buildings, and they just did a fabulous job. And also, too, Dr. Dudley for emceeing the event for us. That was wonderful. As the staff at Collegewood already mentioned, we had a really great event hosting all 11 of our elementary schools. Highly competitive, as always, group, and with three of the Carmel Clay schools taking first, second, and third in the state. It's just super impressive. I can speak for Smoky Row in that I know our students have been practicing very hard, meeting for really the last few months, before and after school, for practicing math, and math is fun, and they really made it fun. And it was just really neat to see them come together as a team and do such a nice job at the event representing our school. I had the opportunity to serve as one of the chairs at the front of the room, so my vantage point was a little bit different, getting to watch the students as they competed. And I'm just proud of our students for being so focused and just really invested in their team. They came together really well. So we're so proud of you. We were state runners-up, which I think is phenomenal, and I've been holding on, I'm sure they're like, "Mrs. Jay, we want these," to our medals so we can hand those out tonight to our team. But we're super proud of you guys, and we just are always so fortunate to see our students representing our school so well. So I am going to go ahead and introduce our two coaches who will introduce our team members. I have Mrs. Barb Monty Smith and Mrs. Paige Miller. So congratulations.
Thank you for the invitation to come over again. We always enjoy coming over and showing off our teams. As a coach, I must say, it was a tie, and we did have to go to the third tiebreaker to get a winner, but that's all right. Not that your coaches are a bit competitive. Jacey and I shook hands that night, and we're still friends. So, another thing, I'd like to thank all of the parents that provide transportation and pick their kids up later after school, bring them early. We really do appreciate the parents. We couldn't do our job without your support, and we appreciate the fact that you get up early and also come get them after school. Our Math Bowl team consists of, we may be small, but we're mighty.
Can I just show them to you this way?
I've got them right.
Oh, okay.
Zoya Sayed. Timothy Lim. Alan Li. Oh, Rico Tang. Rico, I didn't see him. There he is.
Thank you.
First, I'd like to say thank you so much for inviting us here tonight to celebrate our students' hard work and dedication. I'm very proud of them for coming in third in the state. We've worked really hard, and I just wanted to say thank you to the parents for being there and supporting us as well. And I feel like the first two teams really said everything, so there's really not much for me to say, so that makes my job very easy. So I'd like to recognize our students. Brandon Lee, if you're here. Alex Me. Blake Lieber.
Is this Brandon?
Yes. Brandon, right there. Erica Zhao.
Good job.
Osney Jerapu.
Who's this?
Devon Joshi. Josh Sejen. Grant Rickard. Valerie Foo. Navia Shah. Wei Han Yu. Michelle Du. And Nora Nace.
I've released, it's done at 10:30, so I can watch my soap operas.
Now, I would like to teach all the children and parents one vocabulary word. I know this is a math thing, but when you come first, second, and third, that's called a sweep. So I want to congratulate all of you, coaches and you students, on just fantastic work, and it doesn't get much better than that for second and third for Carmel Clay Schools. So congratulations on your sweep of the math parents.
Our next presentation is the Carmel Education Foundation Spring Grant Awards. For those that are in the audience that do not know about the Carmel Education Foundation, we are very thankful here in Carmel Clay Schools to have a foundation whose mission it is is to support our students and our teachers. And I believe twice a year, they give out grants to teachers to do special projects, and we'll hear more about that in a minute. So we have Ms. Barbara Danquest and Ms. Stephanie McDonald. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you very much for allowing us to come. We're very excited from the foundation to be able to recognize all these teachers that have written and applied for funds from the Carmel Education Foundation, and now you'll be seeing the award being used in your classroom, whether it's from professional development or whether it's actual items that they're going to be placing in their classroom to help the education. Tonight, we're going to ask one of our board members, Kathy Holcomb, to come and make the announcement for each of the writer of the grant who received it, and the teachers that are part of that grant, to come up front and shake the hands of Dr. Berthford, receive the certificate, and then have a chance to shake the hands of the school board. Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity, and we're really excited about all of the grants that we've given out this year. So without further ado, I will start with the development grants. So these are grants for teachers to often go to a conference or to get training in a particular technique. So our first award winner was Catherine Blake, who got a grant on conscious discipline training with Sarah Inskeep from Forestale Elementary. Principal Sarah Inskeep. Our next grant recipient was Sam Chenoweth, who got a grant for the Broadway Evolved Workshop from Carmel High School. Principal Tom Harmus. He's not here. Next, we have Jennifer Conley, who got a grant for the Supporting Beginning Writers Program, along with Brittany Smith, Emily Conley, Caitlin Montz, and Devon Mendenhall from Cherry Tree Elementary. Principal Chris Atkinson. And next up is Lauren Dunlap, who got a grant for the Conscious Discipline Professional Development E-course, and she is from Woodbrook Elementary. Principal Kelly Davis. Then Ashley Eaton, who got a grant for the First Steps in Music Training. She's from West Clay Elementary. Principal Jennifer Shuhai. Kelly Flagger for Get Certified Google Greatness 2019 with Sarah Aggie. Darla Ashton, Candice Baggett, Desiree Becker, Katie Blake, and Molly Bulokas. She's from the district. Rachel Green, Get Your Teach On with Jennifer Marshall, Molly Kason, and Lyle Genert from Prairie Trace Elementary. Principal Jill Shep. Betsy Howard for Planning for High Quality Differentiation from West Clay Elementary. Principal Jennifer Shuhai.
Shuhai.
Hillary Macamur for the Pound Certification for Cardiovascular Fitness from Carmel Middle. Principal Deanna Pittman. April Pickett for Teach Your Heart Out with Kristen Kennedy and Megan Camparado from Smoky Row Elementary. Lila Jay, principal. Next, we have Justin Quick with Historical Thinking Matters from Carmel High School. Principal Tom Harmus. And Amanda Richmond for Institute for Educational Initiatives Training with Kristen Kessler and Susan Johnson from Carmel High School. Principal Tom Prince. And then we have Megan Shoef for Conscious Discipline Professional Development E-course with Kathy Olson and Alyssa Carmichael from Collegewood Elementary. Kathy Olson, principal. Heidi Stan for Shaping Up Wellness from Clay Middle with Todd Crosby as our principal. Julia Walker for Showwork Level 11 Coursework from Orchard Park. Principal Rhonda Turner. Elizabeth Wagner for Baltimore or Bust with Rachel Harder, Steffi McCourt, and Josh Lowe from Clay Middle. Principal Tom, Todd Crosby. And that concludes our development grants. Next up are our classroom grants. So these are grants for materials or other materials that they would use in their classrooms. So first up is Nicholas Carter for Developing Creativity and Community Through Role-Playing Games, and she got that with Nathan Sharkey. Christina Hunt and Austin Flynn from Carmel High School. Principal Tom Harmus. We have Denise Dragish for Global Read Aloud from Prairie Trace Elementary. Principal Jill Shep. Jill Niptash for Feeling Buddies with Marla Wald and Lauren Dunlap from Woodbrook Elementary. Principal Kelly Davis. Next up is Rachel Nuttall for Power Up Your Brains by Powering Down Your Devices with Denise Dragish, Stu Smith, Sarah Ah, and Carly Glickman from Prairie Trace Elementary. Jill Shep, principal. We have Jason Riggsby for Scientific Calculator Classroom Set from Carmel High School. Principal Tom Harmus. And then we have Jill Wolfgang on Differentiating with Task Cards from Town Meadow Elementary. Principal Nikki Roche.
I just wanted to add how lucky we are to have teachers that want to get better. I heard a quote this week that says, "We want to be the best at getting better," and we really have staff that exemplifies that, and how fortunate we are to have a foundation that is able to raise money, supported by you, the community, to give them those opportunities to grow like that. So it's just a perfect combination, having a great foundation that keeps it relatively simple for them to get grants, to do very creative things, and to up their game. So thank you to the foundation, and also, of course, to our teachers who are just fabulous. Thank you.
Well, thank you again, and so that nobody thinks that we don't care about our teachers. They got to take a picture before the meeting, so that will be posted. We will pause very briefly for those that want to exit, and then we will resume in a few seconds for some public comment. value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to speak regarding corporation matters. However, the main purpose of the meeting is to conduct corporation business, and public comment will be limited. The public comment section is limited to 30 minutes. We have, no, 30 minutes for public comment.
Total.
Total. We have 11 people who would like to speak. Each person is entitled to speak for three minutes. Each person is entitled to speak for three minutes. So I encourage those that are at the beginning to not, after that, not to repeat what has been said before you so that we can allow everybody that would like an opportunity to speak. When you come up to the podium, please state your name and your address. Public comments are permitted only as indicated on the registration form. Comments may not contain any personal complaints against a student, employee, or school official. You will have three minutes. The green light will come on when your time begins, the yellow light when you have 30 seconds left, and the red light when your time is up. The first person that would like to speak is Lisa Washburn.
Hello. I'm Lisa Washburn of 13699 Royal Saddle Drive. I have three kids at Smokey Row Elementary and one at Carmel Middle School. I'm here today to support the recess cause. I was involved in this cause six years ago, and I want to give some background on what has been done in the past to promote more recess for our schools. During the 2012-2013 school year, a group of parents got together to research the role of recess on children's development. We launched an informative website and gathered 249 signatures on a petition to increase recess time. And I believe that number would have been a lot higher if we'd had contact information for all CCS parents. We presented our findings at the April 2013 school board meeting. However, no changes to recess were made at that time. During the 2016-2017 school year, Superintendent Nick Wall informed teachers that they were allowed to take their students outside for extra recess at their discretion. This was a huge gain. Before this, teachers weren't given any flexibility outside of the 15 minutes of scheduled recess. Following this policy change, I saw my three elementary school children getting occasional extra recess on nice days. This flexibility was a great step in the right direction, but not all teachers choose to give their students the extra recess time that their growing minds and bodies need. In January 2018, our district conducted a thought exchange survey regarding elementary school programming. The survey results showed that the number-one change stakeholders wanted to see at the elementary school level was more unstructured playtime and/or physical activity. So CCS parents do support more recess. The duration of recess in other nearby school districts ranges from about 20 to 25 minutes. That's short, but not as short as our district's 15-minute allotment. Also, our elementary schools are in session each day for, I believe, 40 minutes beyond the five academic hours required by the state. Some of that extra time could be prioritized for recess, or an extension to the school day could be considered. I'm so grateful to Dr. Beresford and to our wonderful school board for all you do to make Carmel Play Schools a great place for our children to learn. And I encourage you to consider how we can offer more recess time to our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa, for your comments. Next, the person who would like to speak is Laura Steiner.
My name is Laura Steiner. I live at 13736 Royal Saddle Drive. I have two kids at Smokey Row this year, and I will have three there next year. So I was going to stand up here and talk about the American Academy of Pediatrics' recommendations for recess. But then I realized that I think everyone in this room probably already has read those and knows them. I think we're all aware of the studies and the recommendations from doctors and child development experts. I think all the science is really clear about the benefits of unstructured time for the students. And so I thought it kind of comes down to two options, that either the science is not believed or the science is being ignored. And so I want what's best for my kids. I want what's best for all the kids in the school. And we may not know the perfect amount of recess time right now. We may not know the perfect ratio of structured to unstructured time in the classroom. But we do know that the way the day is now is not optimal. And that increasing the amount of recess in our schools will be better for our children socially, emotionally, physically, and yes, academically, as the research shows. So the meeting tonight, there's a group of us here, and this is really what we decided was our first step. And we are a big group of concerned parents. There's a much bigger group than what is here tonight, that this issue is at the top of their minds. So we have some more ideas on how to push this issue. We're hoping we don't need to do that. We're hoping that something happens. But we won't stop fighting because it's very important to us. So I want to see at least 30 minutes of recess built in for every student, first through fifth grade. And I think for our youngest students, for our kindergarteners, they're five, six years old, that they really need more breaks during the day and, you know, two breaks, two 30-minute breaks during the day to play. So this needs to happen next school year. We won't allow the way it is now to go on any longer. As Lisa said, this has been going on for six years. I know not all of you have been here for six years, but it has been going on for that long. So we have five hours and 45 minutes of instruction time, and we are only required to have five hours in the school day. So the increase in the length of the school day is not required. I know it's probably not possible to increase the length of the school day next year. I imagine that's a big endeavor, but it's not necessary. We can do it now. And I liked what Dr. Beresford said, that we want to be the best at getting better. And right now, we are not the best at this particular topic. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura, for sharing your thoughts with the board. The next speaker is Teri Cribb.
I am Teri Cribb, and I live at 12416 Bell and Braith Street. As you heard, at least six years ago, parents spoke at the meeting requesting the need for more recess. And other parents have continued to press for it over the years. Of seven seats up there, four of you have been here part of this for five years. I am well aware of the change in leadership, logistical issues, and updates made publicly about the current and future status of recess. But these are no longer valid excuses. It's been years. There are no results, and parents have been told there won't be for over a year, if at all. As appointed leaders and elected officials, we need you to not just listen, but lead. The American Academy of Pediatrics in 2013 made it clear the need for increased recess, but still, there is only the 15 minutes. I have a fourth grader stressed out from school and a kindergartner who longs for the good old days of her full-day pre-K program. My son will miss out on recess completely in middle school if he has to wait over a year, which is ridiculous because those kids need it too, according to research. Gym class daily is not unstructured play. Some children find gym class stressful. Brain breaks are nice, but not good enough. Recession is about unstructured play where children are in control of what they choose to do. During recess, they are challenged socially, emotionally, and physically, and learn to figure out how to solve problems outside of the classroom. Because of the inertia by this board, there are more children in Carmel Clay schools who are anxious and depressed because they are not given the opportunities they need in school to develop properly. I would like to know what issues over the past six years have been so much more important than our children's mental and emotional health? I know there are many other parents who couldn't be here tonight who share my disappointment that the school day is not structured in the best interest of our students. In August, I provided Dr. Beresford a binder of useful articles, and would be happy to make those articles and other recent research available to you all. Let me be clear, increased recess needs to happen for the upcoming school year. Based on the board's lack of performance over the last several years related to recess, it has unfortunately earned an F in its handling of this issue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Teri. Next is Jennifer Witherby.
My name is Jennifer Witherby, and I live at 5765 Cooper's Hawk Drive. Good evening. I would like to start by saying how much we love Carmel schools, and it was for this reason that my family and I relocated here of Indianapolis. However, I was appalled when I found out that my students, my children, were only going to have 15 minutes of recess. So it is why I'm here now in an effort to represent the over 750 members of our Carmel Recession Initiative Facebook group. And I'm here to make a plea, again, for additional time for unstructured play in the day for our students. A couple of facts on the CDC reporting that the percentage of children and adolescents affected by childhood obesity has more than tripled since the 1970s. Data from the 2015-16 school year show that one in five children and young people ages six to 19 are considered obese. Although genetic factors are unchangeable, we can start by promoting healthier lifestyles in our children now. Obesity can have long-term effects on physical, social, and emotional health. A child who is obese is more likely to be teased or bullied more than the average weight of a peer with their average weight. The American Pediatric Association recommends children to have a minimum of 60 minutes of physical activity per day. My children currently get 15 minutes of recess and one PE class a week. I personally had three recesses when I was, until I was in eighth grade. I had two 20 minutes, one in the morning and one in the afternoon, and I got 30 minutes after lunch. I would just challenge you to think back of your memories when you were a child, and I'm pretty sure they don't include remembering I read or I stopped testing. They most likely involve memories of creating and playing with your friends. So it is for this reason I ask one more time to please consider adding more unstructured play to their day. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next is Carla Walsworth.
I'm Carla Walsworth from the Guilford Park neighborhood. I've got two kids, one middle and one in elementary school. So one year ago, I stood at this podium, and I advocated for more recess in our schools. I didn't know until recently that six years ago, my friend Katie did this six years ago. So she, actually, her Facebook memory popped up a few days ago saying how she was so excited to go to the board meeting in 2013 and advocate for more recess. I'd encourage you all to look that one up. Today, states are considering, actually, there are states that have mandated recess: Missouri, Florida, New Jersey, Rhode Island, Arizona. There are additionally seven more who are considering, or who have mandated, physical activity in certain amounts. And I've given you all articles I left last week on those states, if you'd like to look at them. I love Carmel Clay schools. I think it's such a leader in so many areas, and I really want us to be a leader in this area, providing more recess for our kids. Zionsville has a five-minute-longer day, yet they've got a 30-minute-longer recess. I pulled this off their website recently. I don't want, and I don't think you want, good families moving out of the district to find more recess. I would like it to happen next fall. According to the AAP, play is voluntary, play is unstructured. Without an emphasis on play, children's ability to pay attention and behave appropriately in class is disadvantaged. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carla. Next is Megan Odell.
My name is Megan Odell, and I live at 13161 Aquamarine Drive here in Carmel. I currently, I have two daughters that are currently in first, or second and first grade at, they're turtles, at Mohawk Trails, and I have another that's going to be joining in about two years. I am an employer and hiring manager of over 180 individuals over my divisions. So I wanted to speak towards the long, the downstream effects of having a whole and balanced individual in society, and what I value and what I know that a lot of my colleagues also value. I'm a pharmacist. I know the importance of education. I know the importance of academics, and those are, and I have colleagues as well as employees who can't think outside the box. They can't solve problems if they weren't given an algorithm. And recess is an opportunity for these children to have critical thinking skills, to develop those, and to socially interact. Recession, recess, excuse me, recess times give more opportunity for socialization, teamwork, and practice with conflict resolution skills. Asking other kids to play, explaining the rules of a complex game, and hashing out disputes are all important life lessons that kids can only learn if they're given time to play. Recession also offers a chance for children to strengthen their leadership and negotiation skills, and it can prevent bullying. I will tell you that a lot of my employees, once they're done with the work that's given to them, they don't know what to do next without being told. Some of that's ingrained in them, some of that's work ethic, but a lot of that is learned behavior because that's what they've done their whole college career, their whole elementary career, and their whole middle school career. So I would encourage you to think of the whole person and the balance that can have a downstream effect on their, our leaders of tomorrow. So, thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Next is Brenda Friesch.
I'm Brenda Fresh from the Lexington Farms neighborhood, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak here today. And I'm here to please ask you to raise the district minimum for recess from the current 15-minute requirement to at least 30 minutes daily starting in fall 2019. When we moved our family here to Carmel, a main factor that drew us to the area is the highly-rated schools district of Carmel Clay. So we made this move in 2013, when my oldest was about to start kindergarten. And at this time, the petition that many have mentioned was going around to get, go from 15 minutes to 30 minutes of recess. So as a parent, this was very exciting. I mean, it was on the board meeting that took place on April 22, 2013. And it was exciting to see all these parents involved in wanting more recess and pushing for more recess for our kids because 15 minutes is not much time at all. So if we think about it, during this 15 minutes, we're asking our kids to decide an activity they want to do, either, and possibly create their own imaginary play. Then they have to set out the roles and designate who does what, and then we're asking them to implement their game. So in the professional world, as adults, we would barely make it past that brainstorming phase in that 15 minutes. And here, we're asking our kids to do all of this and have your play in 15 minutes. It's not really reasonable. So this is why I'm asking that we increase our time to 30 minutes at least, because right now, we have a disservice to our children and their social, excuse me, and their social development if we don't give them more unstructured playtime. So during recess, as others have said, this is the prime opportunity for kids to be creative, explore new ideas and games, be physically active, learn to take turns and cooperate, to have conflicts, and to learn to solve those conflicts. This is such an important skill. So as research has shown, recess is beneficial for our children's physical wellness, social skills, and also provides a much-needed break that has proven to increase academic performance in classroom. So because there's so much research showing the benefits of recess, I really struggle to understand why we are still here six years later and still at 15 minutes of recess. We're still struggling to try to get just more than 15 minutes for our kids. So, which is exactly where we were 2013 when I moved here. So as I mentioned, my oldest child, who was entering, she was entering kindergarten in 2013, now she's graduating fifth grade. So we can't wait another year, two years, or six years. We need to make this change now. It is often said that Carmel is the best school district in the state, and I feel like it is. And many, like my own family, move here for the school. So we need to live up to our reputation and show that while Carmel will continue to lead in the academic world for each student, we also need to provide the best opportunities for students to grow physically, socially, and emotionally. And for that, they need more recess. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Brenda. Next is Jamie Burns.
I'm Jamie Burns. I live at 3901 Castle Rock Drive. So I'd just like to talk about how the lack of recess or little recess affects my children personally. I have three children. One, my daughter goes to Carmel High School. My son, one of my sons, goes to Creekside Middle School. And then my youngest son goes to Town Middle Elementary School. So we moved So we moved here in June, and so this was our first year in the Carmel Clay School District. We moved here from Colorado. And in Colorado, the elementary school had two 15-minute recesses and then 25 minutes for lunch, and after the kids were done eating, they could go outside and play. And then the middle school had a 45-minute lunch, and after they were done eating, they could go outside and play. And then they also had what they called move -- was movement, where the teachers could take them out during their class period if they wanted to, and they could do walking around the track or something physical like that. And then the high school also had a 45-minute lunch, and they were able to eat outside if they wanted or inside, just off of their choice. And so since coming to the Carmel Clay Schools, I feel that my children have been affected from not having as much outside time. They -- so my oldest has started to have some anxiety, and she never had anxiety before. And my middle son has shown some signs of depression, and he also has not had issues with that in the past. And then my youngest son, I've had a couple of calls home saying that he is having a hard time sitting still in his seat, and he never had that issue before. And so I do think that the majority of why those things are happening is from the lack of them being able to get outside exposure and unstructured play. And because the majority of their time of the day is spent at school. And so in Carmel Clay Schools, the middle school students, they're not allowed to leave the building. They stay inside all day long. And then the high school, same thing, they're not allowed to leave the building. And the high school has very few windows. My daughter doesn't have a single classroom that has a window in it, and she only has one class where she can walk by the catwalk where there are windows. And she says it's like, you know, amazing that she actually can see outside during that part of her day. And so I really think it'd be really great if the elementary school students could have at least 30 minutes of recess for the benefits, as people have said before, and that the middle school and high school could eat lunch outside. That's one of my suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Next speaker is Liz Eckert.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Eckert. My address is 3274 Whispering Pines Lane, Carmel. And I have two boys that go to West Clay Elementary. I've got a second grader and a kindergarten -- kindergartner. And I am here with these other moms who have fat asleep, given off the statistics and the studies of why it's so important that our kids need to get out more. As a parent, I see it firsthand, the wiggly kids, the need for more playtime outside, and frankly, the teachers need it too. So I am just here as another advocate for you guys to please consider this for next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Next speaker is Kirsten Lefan.
Good evening. My name is Kirsten Lefan. I live at 13048 Aberdeen Bend. I have a son at West Clay Elementary and a child who will be enrolling in school there starting next fall. I agree wholeheartedly with so many of the comments, all the statistics that have been brought up already this evening. I'd like to talk a little bit more about our teachers and the impact that this has on them. Currently, our classroom sizes have no cap on them, which provides our teachers really the responsibility of making magic happen in their classrooms. They are teaching these students all day long with the responsibility of high standards, high test scores. They also have the challenges of working with students who may have behavioral needs, students who may have special learning needs, and we're asking them to do all of this with the high number, as I said, of students in each class without a cap in the classroom while dealing with children who aren't being given the amount of time they need each day to have unstructured play, to have movement, to have the opportunity for their bodies to move so that they can focus properly, so that they can absorb the information and the teaching that they're given by these teachers. We have incredible teachers in our school district, and I think you could see that tonight by the example of how many of them work so hard in writing the grants and preparing the resources and tools that they need for their students. They care about their kids. And I talk to these teachers at the schools, and they are desperate for this. This is something that they see impacting the students in their classroom. They are working very hard, and I think it would be a shame if we lost some of our best teachers because they feel that they are struggling in maintaining the standards, the keeping up with all the -- of the needs of their students, when we could give them so much help by getting these kids out more in the daytime, by providing them this physical activity, by giving them the chance to be able to have especially, you know, we see this so often in young boys, that their bodies need to move. They need to have the opportunity to be physical, especially when they are young. When my child started as a kindergarten and even into first grade, I was shocked to look at his daily class schedule and realize he was spending more time in computer lab as a five- and six-year-old than he was at outdoor play at recess. To me, that says a lot. There is something wrong with that. Please consider the change for 30-minute recess for the fall. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirsten. Last person that would -- has requested to speak is Rachel Wendling.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Wendling, and I live at 930 West Almond Drive in the downtown area. My son is a kindergartner at Orchard Park Elementary School. I was -- also had some ideas to present to you. I'm an early childhood educator here in the community. So instead of rehashing some of the facts that a lot of our parents have come in and presented that I'm sure you all know, I wanted to discuss with you what I'm seeing at a younger age, at an earlier level, and the needs and the interests of the parents that I talk to every single day. I teach at a unique school where we highly value play and unstructured free time, as a lot of preschools do, but we make it a point to give the children the majority of their day as unstructured free play, to encourage them to build their social skills, their communication skills, their creativity, and give them the time that they need for conflict resolution. And I hear from a lot of concerned parents on a daily basis about what they're going to do come time to enroll in kindergarten. And it's a hot topic, and it's my job to encourage them and to help prepare their students to make that leap. But I do hear of a lot of parents coming in and considering moving to other districts possibly, or people who are incoming and looking for a preschool but don't know where they're going to buy their home because they do recognize Carmel Clay Schools as a leader in academics, in performing arts, in the sports world. But they see the disparity in the recess time, the unstructured free play that we are giving to our young children, and they're looking at other districts in the nearby area when they're considering where they want to make their home. And as an educator myself, it really saddens me to see the effect that it has on my children leaving my school and going into the school system, my kids included. My son has been stated as a leader in the beginning of the school year, but come November, he started having a lot of issues staying in his seat, following directions as well as he once was, and his teacher reached out to me, and I told her that this is a symptom of something bigger. He's only been outside a handful of times since November, and it's causing him a lot of stress and anxiety in his school day, and he does not want to go to school anymore. So I just really want to urge you guys to consider the impact it's having on our families. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel, and thank you for all the parents that took their time to come speak to us. We are listening. While normally, we don't respond to public comment, we only -- I only felt it was fair to give Dr. Beresford a moment to update you if you don't already know about the process that is underway to hopefully address your concerns.
Thank you. I think most of you might know already because I put the word out quite a bit, but we are looking at the time of day for both the elementary schools and the secondary schools as well for -- and we've been working on that throughout this year following a process. And shortly after spring break, we're going to be sending out through electronically, like through video, some examples of what the school day might look like at the elementary level and also at the secondary level. And so the idea of us to get some information out so you can kind of get a look at what it looks like, and then we'll get feedback from staff and from parents through that electronic means in order to hopefully come to a decision on what, you know, what path we'll take for moving forward. Very publicly announced that we would not be making any changes to the school day for next year, mostly because it's just a very complicated process, especially with doing secondary and elementary if that would be the decision that would be made. So where we are right now is preparing that presentation, and we'll be ready to put that out for more feedback. So that's where we are at this point in time. One of the aspects of that, the elementary study that we've been working on, is adding time to the day, what could be used for recess and also for more social-emotional learning activities, also just to give teachers some time to use it as they need it for, you know, a variety of reasons. We've seen a lot -- you know, we added 10 minutes to the school day because of weather this year, and we've seen that being used quite a bit for social-emotional learning activities and that sort of thing. And so there is some, you know, some things going on right now with that. But I want to just make clear what the process is moving forward, where we are right now in that process that we've been working on throughout the year. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Beresford. Next on the agenda is consent. On consent for this meeting, we have personnel report, claims, payroll, approval of gift applications, and approval of the workshop minutes from February 11th and the minutes from the regular session on February 25th. I just want to acknowledge that the gift applications include a gift from BAM Outdoors for the Peritrace in support of an artist in residency project titled Art for Sky, some Lilly US Matching Grants, a couple of gifts in memory of David Flick, who worked as an instructional assistant at Carmel High School, and the Carmel Education Foundation donated money that they received from the City of Carmel towards the purchase of Stop the Bleed kits, which will be distributed throughout Carmel Clay Schools. May I have a motion to approve the consent items?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all in favor of consent? Please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? No, thank you. Motion carries. Next on the agenda, we have a couple of action items. The first action item is adoption -- adopt the deletion of policy 4462 for retaking a class at the high school students. Dr. Dudley?
Thank you. So we do have four policies this evening that we are bringing for a second reading. You may recall at our February meeting, we also brought a policy on social media and looking at that. And after further review from our policy committee and also working with our attorneys, we've decided to table that for now and possibly look at that and combining that with some other policies. So we're not bringing that for a second reading at this time. So the first policy we are bringing for a second reading is policy five -- or no, not five, four. Policy 4462, and this is retaking a course at the high school. The recommendation is to delete this policy and that retaking of a course is addressed in the high school handbook. And so we -- the policy committee felt like it did not need to be in board policies because it is in the handbook, and that is by default policy as well.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the deletion of policy 4462, retaking a class by high school students?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions? Thank you. I know we had the opportunity to review the policy at our last meeting and ask questions then, so we will now take a vote. All in favor of approving the adoption to delete policy 4462? Please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? No. Thank you. The next action item is, again, Dr. Dudley, it's adoption of policy 4771, search and seizure.
Yes, and this policy is a revision of a current policy. The policy committee reviewed this, made some changes, and also our attorneys at Church, Churchill, and Antrim also reviewed it and made some suggested changes as well as far as the search and seizure in our classrooms or in our school buildings.
Thank you, Dr. Dudley. May I have a motion to approve the adoption of policy or the changes to the policy 4771 on search and seizure? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or questions? No, then we will move to vote. All in favor of the adoption of policy 4771 on search and seizure? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Thank you. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is adoption of policy 7440, facility security program. Again, Dr. Dudley.
Yes, this policy is also a policy that has been revised. It's a policy that has also been reviewed by Church, Churchill, and Antrim, our attorneys, and it looks at the facility security for all of our buildings in Carmel Clay Schools.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the adoption of policy 7440, facility security program?
So moved.
Thank you. Second? Thank you. Any discussion? No, thank you. All in favor? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, thank you. Motion carries. The final policy for this evening, again, Dr. Dudley, it's adoption of policy 5414, therapy dogs.
Yes, and this policy is a new policy for Carmel Clay Schools. This policy was -- the original wording was suggested by our insurance company and then further reviewed by our insurance company, as well as our attorneys at Church, Churchill, and Antrim. And this would allow public school -- people that work in the district to bring a therapy dog to work alongside of our students.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the adoption of new policy 5414 on therapy dogs? Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Any discussion? No, thank you. We will now take a vote. All in favor? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, thank you. Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Dudley. Next on the agenda, we move to reports. As we had a motion earlier in the meeting, we are going to adjust the order as set forth in the agenda. So next is David Woodward on e-cigarettes and impact on students.
Thank you, and thanks for the opportunity to come today. When talking about e-cigarettes, impact on our students, we're going to talk big picture, what we're seeing nationally, how it's impacting us locally, how it's impacting our students' health from the health perspective, and what we're doing about it. And so to really present all of this, it's not just going to be myself. I'm going to be working with our partners from CPD, Shane Van Ader, Candace Hardy, who's our nursing coordinator, is also going to present, as well as Dr. Dudley. So let's dive right in statistically. According to the federal government, in the past year alone, vaping amongst high schoolers has increased 78%. This is nationally. They're seeing this everywhere across the United States. In Indiana, according to the Indiana Prevention Resource Center, nearly 30% of high school seniors used a vaping product within the last month. 30% within the last month. Now, you'll notice the trend is going up, and it's not just our high school seniors. our high school seniors. Our freshmen at nearly 20% within the last month. Now, that's in Indiana. So why? All across the nation and in Indiana, this has become a huge problem. So what are the students getting from this? Well, honestly, it appeals to them. You'll see the bright colors as how these products are sold. They're sold with specific flavors that makes them appealing to young people. Bright colors, special flavors, and they're gimmicky. Kids love techie things, and they love things they can get their hands on. And so this is another way that it's appealing to the young kids. It's interesting that we've nearly eradicated actual cigarettes amongst our youth, and yet the use of these e-cigarettes has skyrocketed. They're simply replacing it with something that's more appealing to them. They also don't think it's dangerous. Some common myths amongst our students, they believe that it's just flavoring. They believe it's only water vapor. Sometimes the vapes actually say they're nicotine-free, when in fact they are not necessarily nicotine-free. So our students are being led to all of these attractive items for these vaping products. And so it's leading to this massive increase amongst our students. U.S. Surgeon General back in 2016 actually called it an epidemic. That was years ago. At that time, they reported a 900% increase amongst high school students with vaping products. So what we're seeing nationally is a massive influx of these products, and Carmel Clay Schools is not immune to it. So what we need to talk about is what specific we're seeing and then how we're going to address this. It's already too late to get ahead of the game, so how can we stem this flow a little bit, and how can we start to help our students? To really talk about what we're seeing here locally, I want to bring up Shane Van Ader. He's one of our school resource officers and representative from Carmel Police Department.
How do we get to the next slide?
Yeah.
Or just the, okay. I thought it was interesting. I went back and pulled some statistics from the past several years, and I knew that there was a change. But when I went back and actually researched it, in the 2012-2013 school year when I was a school resource officer, and all the way back to 2008 when I started, on average, I would write about one ticket per year for possession of tobacco. We'd find one kid with cigarettes or one kid smoking in a restroom, something along that line. In 2014, I wrote my first ticket for an electronic cigarette to a student. And in the 2018-2019 school year, as of today, that 24 became 25 today, and so I've written 25 tickets this year for the possession or use of an electronic cigarette at school. And that does not include the violations by students who are 18 or older, who there is no current law in place to address that. I want to talk quickly about the evolution of the electronic cigarette. A lot of people have questions because they just aren't familiar with the products. I brought up a little goody bag of things that have been collected over the years. This is what was known as a mod. You'll recognize these when you see them used in public because they put off a big plume of smoke. On social media, there are contests, there are instructional videos on how to blow giant smoke rings. You'll see kids drive around with their car completely filled with vapor, and that's from one of these. So the top screws off, you refill it with your e-juice, your fluid. We'll talk more about some of the more dangerous things you can put in here, but these are called mods. Even now, routinely on traffic stops, I see tons of adults still using and carrying the mods. The mods were quickly replaced by the pens. We see the pens more now with some more negative use, but again, same principle. You refill the pod with fluid, this little reservoir with fluid. There's a battery in it. Most of these are chargeable with some type of charger that plugs into it, or they sit in a charger. There's a little button that activates it. It heats up a coil and then delivers the nicotine to the user. This also, we started to see a few of these, but not in the same numbers as some of the other products. And then came our nightmare, the Juul. The Juul welcomed in a very unwanted change in culture, and that was a very large number of students could easily possess and hide these. The marketing campaign was huge. Parents didn't even know what they were looking for. Once you take the Juul apart, it essentially looks like a USB device, like a memory stick. It has a pod on it. The little pod, they're preloaded. You buy the pods, they're disposable. In one of these pods, there's the same amount of nicotine that you find in an entire pack of cigarettes. So it would take about 200 puffs off of cigarettes to get the same amount of nicotine you get in one little pod, and a kid could easily go through, you know, one, two, three, four of these a day. The pods are very distinctive. If I can dig in my goody bag here. I'd plan to put all this on the table, but then I'd have to go away from the microphone. The pods, you'll see, they'll come with different colored caps. The caps represent different flavors. The kids seek out these flavors like they would seek out Pokemon, because each flavor is, some are hard to get and some are rare. It got to be such a problem that the legislature actually banned it. So there's a limited number of flavors now, but for a while, they were releasing mystery flavor and hard-to-get flavors and limited release, and kids were going out, and they would go from gas station to gas station to gas station, looking for these different flavored pods. And when I talk to parents about looking for clues, this little cap, kids don't think their parents are going to know what they are. This little cap is what you'll find in kids' backpacks, in their bedrooms, in their cars. The Juul, a little expensive. The Juul still runs, the mods are probably about $150 to $175 a piece. The pens, somewhere in the $85 to $100 range. The Juul became much more affordable at about $50 for a starter kit. So they sell the Juul starter kits. Again, chargeable by plugging into a USB. This is a little USB adapter. It's magnetic, so it's kind of attractive to kids. Plugs into any USB, and it's charged up for the day, because all you have to do is lift it to your mouth and inhale. Many of these devices come with instructions that tell you, it's hard at first because you kind of feel like you're drowning or choking when you take in a deep breath, but if you keep at it, you'll be successful. So that's the marketing that they're going with, the Juul. The Juul, of course, like I said, is about $50. Then came the Boulder. And we started seeing a lot of the Boulder. The Boulder is a $10 version of the Juul essentially. Also, chargeable, excuse me, by USB, disposable, you can throw the whole thing away and buy another one for $10. Again, very high levels of nicotine in this, equivalent to about a pack of cigarettes. Then we started seeing these unique little things called the Soren. Soren's just another manufacturer. This does not, the first time I saw one of these, fell out of a student's pants. I knew he was doing something he shouldn't have been doing in the bathroom. We went to walk to the office, and clank, 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 it falls out on the floor, and it was one of these. So they're rather heavy. They're kind of a pretty rugged type of device. The end, this is the removable cartridge that pops off. You pop a new one on to refill. You push a button, and it delivers the vapor to your mouth, and it's got a little charger on the bottom. This is also the same brand. This is a Soren, just a different look, but you might not recognize this. You might think this is some type of music device if you just saw it and weren't educated and didn't know what you were looking for. Then came the Smoke brand. Smoke made one that looked very much like a Soren, very similar, but always kind of a flashy color. And then lately, we've seen a big surge in the Smoke brand. And again, this is the, these are both Smoke, and you can tell by the color, very bright colors, very attractive to kids, also used primarily for nicotine. And that's essentially it. They'll get the fluids. These are examples of the fluids. This one is Rock Candy is the flavor for this one, Space Jam flavor, all, again, very attractive to our students. And then you'll start to see devices like this, and this is for the delivery of THC, concentrated marijuana, and we're going to get to that in just a second. As you can see, there's no pod on this one because I can't carry those around. Indiana Code makes it a Class C infraction for a minor to either possess, purchase, accept, or use tobacco or an electronic cigarette. An electronic cigarette under Indiana Code is defined as a device that's capable of providing an inhalable dose of nicotine by delivering it in a vaporized solution. As I mentioned before, we do have an issue with adult students who are using, and there's no police remedy for that. The school can still discipline those students, but there's no legal remedy. The city council is looking into some ordinance that would make the smoking ban also apply to vaporizers and electronic cigarettes, which would allow law enforcement to assist the school in dealing with those, with students. Consequences, as we've already learned from Dave, the Surgeon General called vaping an epidemic among our teens. And this smiling gentleman, when you go into his courtroom, won't be smiling so much if you're 13, 14, 15 years old and you're caught with one of these. So the consequences when they're caught, obviously, they receive school discipline. The school hands that out sort of based on how many offenses have occurred. We've caught the same people multiple times. Obviously, they develop a record at school. Then they're brought to me. They receive a ticket, and parents get a phone call that they don't want from a police officer. They're assigned a court date. With that court date, they must appear with a parent. So they come into court. At a bare minimum, court costs are $135. And then the judge, based on the circumstances, can impose fines up to $500. And there was a program for a while that permitted diversion or deferral, where the kids would have to attend classes on a Saturday in Noblesville and get an education on the dangers of nicotine and tobacco products. However, the grants for those programs ran out, and frankly, I don't know that we could have had enough seats for all the kids in Hamilton County that are getting these tickets on a regular basis. And then we move on to kind of the worst-case scenario. So we know that kids are using these products for nicotine, and nicotine's a very, you know, addictive substance. It's one of the most addictive substances that we have on the market. But now we're seeing kids that are using these type of vaporizers, and almost every one of these can be converted to be used with marijuana in a concentrated, very powerful form. In the days of, you know, people just smoking marijuana, the plant-based marijuana, when you ingest it, you're going to be delivered somewhere in the neighborhood of 3% to 10% THC, the psychoactive ingredient that makes people impaired or high. The most potent marijuana plant that you could buy and smoke today is about 17%. Any marijuana that's above about 24%, many of European nations call them dangerous drugs when you get above that level of THC. The stuff we're finding on a regular basis is just like this product in the bottom called Lion's Breath. I don't know if you can read that package, but it says 83.6% THC. They come in very specific flavors, very specific strains. If you put it to your nose, you can smell the marijuana odor, but you have to get it that close, and you really can't smell it in the vapor. The vapor smells like strawberry or lemon drop or something like that, but the odor at the source does have a marijuana smell. When you see these things, when we see them on a regular basis, we're seeing kids call them rips, or they're taking hits or rips. They call it wax, shatter butter, or 7-10, upside down and flipped over is oil, and they'll hashtag those on social media, hey, I need some oil. I already mentioned the Lion's Breath product, which is the primary one we're seeing. This device on the bottom looks a lot like a car key. You might not even recognize it as a vaporizer. The oil is very thick, very, very thick, much like honey, and that's why one of the names they'll call it honey or honey oil. I went to some training last year, and the SROs, the school resource officers, and the principals in Colorado, this is all they deal with. Every day, all day long, are impaired students on this high-level THC, and they said, look out, it's going to come to your schools if it hasn't already. I rolled my eyes, and sure enough, I think I've had 13 or 14 cases this year already of students that are very, very impaired. I mean, one hit of this stuff, I have very little ways to compare it. I could cover it in the next slide. When we see these students who are impaired, one hit looks like they've been on a bender. It's that potent. It's that strong. Second-hand breathing in of this vapor can impair somebody nearby. We have had students across the country and locally that have been sent to the ER. Obviously, as soon as we get them and we realize they're impaired, the very first step is they go to our nurse, Candace Hardy, and her team. She'll talk about that in just a second. This stuff is big business. This isn't somebody growing weed in their backyard. This is major corporate business. They're selling a product, and the product is, hey, this stuff is safe. It's not harmful. It's good for you. It's medicine. That's the message that's going out nationally, and that's what our kids believe. They believe it's completely safe. While in 2014, before this was even really popular, 287 people died just from overdoses on THC, and that doesn't include the number of crashes involving impaired drivers or the illegal trade of this stuff. I mean, in Indiana, it's all illegal, so any purchase, if a kid gets ripped off buying it, somebody's going to want something for that, and that's where the danger comes in, in any type of illegal or dangerous drug. The DEA says one-tenth of an ounce of this stuff at this level, this concentration, can be lethal. And we're seeing it mostly bought and sold on Snapchat. The effects, paranoia, anxiety, psychotic episodes, hallucinations. There can be withdrawal symptoms and addiction. What I see on my personal level is these young people, their grades drop, their attendance drops, their motivation drops, and that's where you really notice it. Big change in friends and the people they hang out with. They get associated with this culture. It changes everything from their dress to their, everything about them. There are conditions that I'm sure Candace could cover in much more detail, where this high-level THC causes gastrointestinal issues that cause frequent vomiting, and we've had students that have missed quite a bit of school because of their stomach issues because of the high levels of THC they're doing. People talk about marijuana being a gateway drug, and there's a big argument about that. The only thing I can tell you is I ask people when I make cocaine arrests, I make heroin arrests, I arrest drug dealers, I say, how'd you start? And it's always the same thing. I started with marijuana when I was 14. I started with marijuana when I was 16. That's my anecdotal experience with marijuana being a gateway drug. And obviously, you know, one of the other effects is being arrested, whether they're under the influence while they're driving, whether they're possessing it. They can be charged for the actual holding of the device, the paraphernalia, and develop a criminal record and can lead to incarceration. So next is Candace Hardy with her presentation on the physical effects.
Okay, so I will just talk quickly about some of the health effects. And like it was mentioned, e-cigarettes are not just harmless water vapor. Various studies have shown that they actually contain several cancer-causing agents, and they're those that are used to make like plastics and adhesives, poisonous and highly flammable liquids, and are even used in wastewater treatment. They also contain tiny particles of nickel, some other heavy metals, tin, chromium, and they're actually in large enough concentrations that do damage the lungs. And then what we see, like Shane mentioned, in schools, reduced impulse control with these kids, lowered abilities to learn, issues paying attention, increased mood disorders. I mean, it does affect them neurologically. They obviously have a higher risk and addiction to other forms of tobacco, and the nicotine exposure can harm the developing brain. We know that the human brain develops through the age of 25. So when you think about our young people, they're really being introduced at a very young age for brain development. And then, of course, it can affect a pregnant mother, their baby. It can cause high blood pressure. It can increase your heart rate. And then Shane mentioned the secondhand exposure from being exposed to the vapor. And honestly, the long-term effects of this vapor is really unknown. The health effects are really unknown because it is still fairly new, and the studies have not been performed fully. There is a new study that just came out from the American College of Cardiology. It just came out here just in March, and it's research, and it's about adults. But what I found interesting about this is that our kids are going to be adults. So if they have this extra amount of time under their belts using this stuff, it's kind of scary. The adults who were reported vaping were significantly... The adults who were reported vaping were significantly more likely to have a heart attack or to have other issues related to stroke. So whether that was coronary artery disease, or circulatory problems, or blood clots that were causing these strokes, 30%, you know, a heart attack is 56%. Those are significant numbers. And then, of course, the adults are seeing the effects neurologically with depression and anxiety and other emotional problems. And other health risks, these are things that I would say are rare, but what lung? So what happens is you kind of have an allergic reaction to the chemicals that are introduced to your lungs, and those chemicals tend to lead to inflammation. It kind of triggers an immune response in your lungs, and essentially, it leads to fluid in your lungs, much like pneumonia. And oftentimes with that, it will cause your lungs to stop working. And another rare but possible health risk would be popcorn lung. And what they found is that it causes airway scarring, and it causes inflammation in the tubes that we use to breathe in our lungs. And over time, this inflammation causes tissues and airways to scar and narrow, and it's difficult to breathe. And the crazy part about this especially is that it's irreversible. So they start to have symptoms, it's hard to breathe, they have wheezing, it's hard to take in a full breath, and at the beginning, they think, "Well, maybe that's because I just started using this." You know, the package, like Shane said, mentioned I may have this in the beginning, but it'll get better. But in fact, it doesn't, and it's irreversible. So, like I said, those are rare, but you never know. You know, the students don't know if they're the next person to possibly have one of these side effects.
So we have a national problem that's leading our students to impact their own physical health, to get involved in heavier drugs, and makes it easy to get involved in heavy drugs. So what we have to do is determine how we're going to address it. So first thing we need to do is inform and equip our parents. Presentations like tonight, which I wish a lot of these parents had stayed, because we need to get this information out to them. The high school had a parent information night. I want to say it was in early January, and there were two different sessions on vaping at that particular night. Well-attended, but we need to continue to get the information out. So one thing we're going to do is actually create some very short but informational video vignettes that parents can access easily without having to necessarily go to an evening program after a long day of work, and then try and market them to parents. We're actually filming one of those tomorrow in assistance from our own Courtney Taylor and Carmel Police Department. We also need to continue to work on, well, I want to show you a vaping bulletin. This went out to parents at Carmel High School back in January. That type of messaging is important. We need to continue our enforcement. That means continued supervision at our schools, and that includes random sweeps even of our restrooms. And as we talked with Carmel PD today, that does take place with our SROs. As most of you know, we have a Stop It app. It's anonymous reporting system, and that allows students to report. You'd be, you probably all wouldn't, actually. Our students are very protective of one another, and they want to watch out for one another. We had 24 different Stop It app reports since January about students in vaping. They're concerned about their friends, they'll tell us where the hotspots are in the school. You know, this is a place where students are going at certain times, and that's been of great assistance to us as well, and continuing to work with our law enforcement partners. The next thing is we need to educate our students. How do we make sure our students are learning how to avoid this, or what the real problems are when they do get involved with this type of thing? This poster was actually from a poster campaign project that Officer Van Ader took this picture last week. Well, the students had a project to research vaping and try and present prevention to their classmates. So there were several of these posters throughout the school last week. On top of that, we promote ways that students can quit through our school counselors. But I think maybe even most importantly is a curriculum that has been developed and is being piloted this year in Carmel Clay Schools, and I'll let Dr. Dudley explain that further.
So as David mentioned, we do need to educate our students as well as our parents on this epidemic. And so our teachers have looked at a program, it's called Catch My Breath, and it's a program that was developed by the University of Texas School of Public Health. And it's a program that will not only educate students as well as parents, but also work to prevent students from using e-cigarettes. And as you can see by the statistics here, after students have gone through this program in both middle school and high school, 86% of the students were less likely to use e-cigarettes. 86% of the students also report knowing more about e-cigarettes, and 82% of the students look at advertising differently because they look at that part in the education of the program. And 70% of the students talk to their family and friends about what they learned in the program. So the statistics in this program are very good to help with not only the education of e-cigarettes, but the prevention of e-cigarettes. And so we are going to pilot this program this spring with our sixth through eighth grade students, as well as our students at the high school. So this pilot will be used in all of our wellness classes in middle school, so all of our sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students will receive this, and then all of our health classes and our interpersonal relations classes in high school. So students that are taking those courses, with the, what we'll want to do is incorporate this fully next year into our health and wellness curriculum, so our students have this ongoing education about the program. The other piece about the program is that it is an online resources for the teachers, and it's continuously being updated. So as Shane was sharing, all of the different devices in use, this program, they'll continue to update that and share that with the teachers so that they can educate the students, because it will continue to change. The program also has many different resources for parents. So prior to the implementation yet this spring, each school will share with the parents information about the program, what their students will be learning, and then also resources that they can use at home to learn more about it too, in addition to the videos that we'll be making. So it's both to educate the students and to educate the parents. And each of the lessons, it's a, in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, it's a series of four lessons for each grade level, and the lessons are between 35 and 45 minutes. They recommend for the students, for the teachers, to use the lessons once a week over a four-week period in each of those grade levels. And the lessons include videos, they include student collaboration, they have a lot of high engagement activity for the students to learn the content, and then also opportunities for the students to rehearse refusal skills as well in the program. The lessons at the high school are also four lessons, about 35 to 45 minutes, and they're recommended to use over a four-week period. And with that ongoing education, we will be able to educate all of our students, because all of our students take wellness, and all of our students are required to take either health or interpersonal relations for this program.
So bottom line, this thing snuck up on everyone around the country. I mean, a couple of years ago, it looked like cigarette use would just be eradicated. Now you see vape shops everywhere, and if you go in a certain area of your gas station, you see where they're selling the vapes. Now, our role is to not turn a blind eye and work to train our community, and our parents, and our students. So that's where we are right now with this particular situation. Any questions?
Well, first of all, I want to thank you, Dave, Shane, Candace, Dr. Dudley. Also, thank you Judge Poindexter for being here, for addressing this important topic. I will open it up to Florida, any board members that have questions. Pam?
Yes, thank you very much for this presentation. It certainly opened my eyes. I remember going through the age of smoking, and my parents smoked, and it was very hard to get people to quit, even though you educated them and you told them about the issues and what was going to happen to your lungs. You know, my parents thought it would never happen to them. Well, it did, but not when they were young, it was older. So I hope this, the education will be of some help to many of these kids, for one thing. Another thing I wanted to know, when a student goes through withdrawal from one of these cigarettes, what happens to them? I mean, I know what happens with cigarettes and alcohol and, you know, the other things, but is there a withdrawal with these as well? And how do we help the students get through that?
Yeah, it's a great question. I don't know the answer.
No, I think mainly you see the same thing you see with people trying to quit tobacco. The cravings are very intense, they have to do something else, and, you know, that's where things like, they're chewing nicotine toothpicks in lieu of the, so they go from, "I think I'm doing better because I'm not smoking anymore, now I'm vaping, so that's somehow better." Well, then, they still have that nicotine addiction, which is very powerful, and then they go to that next product to try to wean off, or they have to go to a patch or something like that and work their way off of it. But, I mean, if you ask a lifelong smoker, they'll tell you today that they still crave it, they still think about it, they still want to do it. They finish a meal and they want a cigarette because they started a bad habit when they were 14 or 15 years old. And I don't know that we can ever, you know, get away from that, especially when these companies market it like this, and I'm afraid that our kids are being sold the same lie that our grandparents were sold. The smoking isn't hard on you, it's actually good for you, it's actually healthy. They're saying this is a better alternative than smoking. We don't know that that's true, and I don't think it is true. I mean, when Candace tells us that the lung damage is irreversible, we know that some of the effects of smoking can reverse over time if you don't smoke and you do better. But I wish I knew all the answers to those questions, but that's a tough one.
And I can tell you that students who are caught with THC are required to work with a certified substance abuse counselor to be allowed to continue in school. So we get them assistance.
Okay, my question about the nicotine was because you were saying that there was a lot more nicotine in these products than there is in a cigarette. So I know what people go through just trying to get off of cigarettes, so this has got to be a whole lot harder.
Yep.
Another question. Are we doing anything as a nation about the companies that are making these products?
And that was one of the only things that I had mentioned that has changed as far as the law goes, and that's they took away some of the flavor, the flavors, especially with the Juul and some of the electronic cigarettes, those flavors, they've limited them down to just a few flavors to make them less attractive to kids, but they do still have, you know, a handful of flavors. The THC products are off the charts with gimmicky advertising for kids. They're all designed, they've got products called like Hubba, something that's supposed to look like Hubba Bubba, and reefers that look like Reese cups, and flavored, you know, candy, or suckers, and trail mix, and they're all loaded up with really high doses of THC.
Okay, and speaking of the THC, you were saying that somebody even near them, if they are doing the THC, can also ingest or be affected by it?
I have that firsthand experience by being exposed for the first time in my life to THC in that way. So was taking someone into custody, just taking a big breath and breathed the water vapor directly into my face and eyes, and I had the effects. I had to be driven home from work that night. That's how serious it is that I personally, I had, two hours later, I had a headache. I had the effects myself. So yes, you can, it's not like smoke where it doesn't necessarily, you know, you could go to a concert at the music center and people around you, you could smell it, but you're not going to get high from it. When you're exposed to this, you're in a car, while somebody's exhaling a large amount of 99% THC, the people around them are also going to be impaired.
I have one more question. Thank you. If a student is doing this in the classroom, how does, is a teacher able to recognize this, and if a teacher does, what do they do?
So the students have gotten pretty clever. So what you see is, especially with the Juul, because it's so small, there's a new product out, this little air fit, that's how small this is. They can hold it in their hand on a school bus, in a classroom, teacher turns around to do something on the board, then they take their sweatshirt, blow the vapor into their shirt, blow it into their sleeves. Kids are wearing wristbands underneath their long sleeves, and they hold their Juuls in their sleeves around here. If a student is found to be impaired, so when we have students that we believe are impaired, the process is that the teacher notifies administration, who comes to the classroom and escorts the student directly to the nurse. The nurse makes an assessment. She'll determine whether or not they believe there's reasonable suspicion to believe that student is impaired. In most of these cases with this high-level THC, it's very obvious even to the layman. And then, from that point, they'll be drug tested by the school, parents are notified, sometimes if necessary, taken to the hospital.
Thank you.
I have a number of questions. Thank you very, very much for being here, and also thank you Judge Poindexter. First and foremost, I really appreciate that you're bringing this down to the sixth through eighth grade. I do know between 2017 and 2018, there was a 48% increase in use of our middle schoolers, not ours, but across the nation, and that is shocking to me. And it is an epidemic of our students, of all children, because these cigarette companies who own a third of Juul are out-marketing to our children because they're not selling cigarettes, so they're looking for another way, which is really unfortunate. I just want to throw a couple of things out. Lung.org backslash e-cig, E-C-I-G-S, has wonderful resources through the American Lung Association. The other thing I think that parents could be working towards is lobbying for the Tobacco 21 law. We have five states, including the District of Columbia, that has Tobacco 21, and that would certainly help with our 18-year-olds at the high school who can purchase and then give to younger children. We know the longer they wait, because their brains are developing, the less likely they are going to use when they're older. Do we have, I believe our SROs carry Narcan. Do we have Narcan in our nurses' office as well, or just through our SROs?
Just through our SROs.
We are, are we sending or sharing this PowerPoint separately, or just through our board workshop information that goes to parents? Because this is really good information, and I would really like for all those who aren't here to see it or have the opportunity. Do you know?
Part of what we're going to do with the video we're filming tomorrow is integrate a lot of this information.
Okay.
But we're going to make it short. So we're actually going to break it into a couple of different videos over time, because we know that if you sit down to watch even a 10-minute video anymore, most people won't finish it.
Okay.
But if we can get it down to five minutes and then break it into a second part, so we can then push that out to parents. That's our plan.
Okay. Are there things that you need from the board to empower you to do more to help with this epidemic?
I can say, I feel very empowered. Dr. Beresford and Dr. Dudley with the curriculum have been absolutely progressive with all of this. You know, because this is, it has been very quick, and for a lot of communities, I don't think they're addressing it in any way. And so to be even working towards this and towards like a parent program that we can push out and literally put on their laptops or on their phones, I feel very empowered.
I have heard that this is fairly common amongst a lot of our students who participate in sports. I don't think any, in addition to other areas. So what are the implications? What happens if students in sports are caught with e-cigs or the dabbing pen or what have you? What, are they suspended from playing? How, what happens? Does anybody know?
I think if you're caught at a sport, it would be like a typical discipline issue, and that would lead to your in-school suspension. And if it were found with the THC, then it would lead to the waiver for expulsion.
Okay.
Which then leads to community service and working with a certified substance abuse counselor.
Okay. I think that's it for now, but I might have more as I flip through my notes. Thank you.
Lynn?
Well, first of all, like other board members, I want to thank you for this very informational presentation. And I was shocked by the statistics and then the impact on our students' health and also on our society. I think this is an important issue, just as important as school safety. So for school safety, we have a parent academy, right? And we have them involved here, and we really And we really need also community involvement, engagement here in compacting this social epidemic. So really appreciate it. Thank you.
I just kind of want to make a comment. I really loved how you brought in the examples. I think we talk a lot about students, and obviously that's a number priority, but I have friends, they're, these parents are doing these exact same things because I don't think they know either. So I think as much as we're helping our students, I think that we're helping our parents as well, because I don't think they know all of this. And I don't think a lot of, you know, obviously the ones who aren't, they don't know what all that looks like. So it could be sitting on their kid's desk, and they'd have absolutely no clue. So I do appreciate, I think that's very powerful. So I hope that that's included in your education too, of just seeing what it actually looks like. So thank you.
Pam? One more. Yes. I was wondering, as we were talking about bringing it to parents, have we talked about bringing it to PTO boards and PTO meetings when they have parents come in for parent What, you know, just every time parents get together, is there a way that we can present this or do a small snippet?
Yeah. Great question. We've not made those steps yet. But as we work forward, I think that's a great idea.
Any other questions? No. Well, thank you very much, all three of you. We appreciate it. Again, thank you Judge Poindexter. Next on the agenda, and I appreciate Roger's indulging this topic to go first, even though we hope there'd be more parents here for it, but Roger, on new education and operation funding.
Yes, thank you. I will go through just a short tutorial on the new education fund, the operation fund, some of which you've seen. So I'll do a little bit of a review of what we talked about in the summer, and then I'll go right into presenting the, this month's financial update. Okay? So Board members, recall that in the summer, well, last legislation in 2017, House Enrolled Act 1009 was passed, and it eliminated these funds. You remember there were four funds, the general fund, the capital fund, transportation, bus replacement. They were combined really into two funds, our education fund now and our operations fund. The referendum and the debt service stayed the same. And so we went from essentially four funds down to two. And that started just in January of 2019. So first with regard to the education fund, on the revenue side, nothing really changed. We, that fund is still funded with a state basic grant, essentially the same as 2018. So that just, that money just comes now to the education fund rather than the previous general fund. However, on the expenditure side in the education fund, that fund now is 96% salary and benefits. It used to be about 94%. It only includes expenses that are directly related to student instruction. So, and you can see the list here, but things like utilities, custodial services, business office, they're now paid from the operations fund. And so the operations fund had more change. It essentially combined the previous transportation fund and the bus replacement fund, the capital projects fund, and in our case, just over $16 million of expenses that were previously in the general fund are now, were transferred to the new operation fund. You can see those, there are such things as a business office, utilities, et cetera, that are not directly related to student instruction. So the operations fund expenditures then essentially are comparable to last year's expenditures, which occurred in the transportation, bus replacement, capital projects, and these transfer general fund. So what I'd emphasize is, is when all this change occurred, we didn't get any more money, and it didn't change any of our expenses. It's a, to that extent, it's a bookkeeping issue as far as where we code the expenses from and where the revenue comes from. And so, but unfortunately, the amount of money didn't change. And certainly on our, on the expenditure side, none of this change resulted in any of our expenses changing. So with regard then to, with a little more specifics, the education fund and the referendum fund, so those are two separate funds, as you know, but when I present the financial information, I've historically combined those because we use both funds for the same purpose. And we really see the referendum fund as additional funds that we have now, fortunately, to better support previously our general fund, now the education fund. And so the revenue, this will relate when I present the financial report, but the revenue in these funds, first the property tax and all the local revenue, excise tax and so forth, that's from the, really for the referendum fund. And as you know, we received that primarily in May and November. And that's significant because our, 96% of our expenses are salary and benefits, which are very regular every, you know, every pay period. And so then the basic grant, we do receive monthly, and so that's not always been the case. And when the, years ago, when the general fund was also supported with property tax, but now the major, almost all of our money in the education fund is, comes monthly, and so that's, that's very in tune with the regular salary and benefit expenses. And then we have some other miscellaneous funds, such as fees and summer school and so forth. Those are relatively small, and they come in irregularly as well. Then on the expenditure side, as I said, 96% of our expenditures are salary and benefits, and that's every two weeks. Then we have purchase services, which are detailed here, such as transfer tuition for spatial education, summer school, J. Everett Light for vocational programming, and then some for our St. Vincent nurses or otherwise contracted. And so those are also expended irregularly. And then we have supplies and property. And Pam had asked earlier, what's property? And, but that's the, kind of the state terminology that's used. But supplies, of course, are, in the case, the education fund, primarily instructional supplies. And then property is really equipment. It would be probably a more insightful definition of it, but it's, it's equipment, and in this case, it's mostly technology types of equipment. And for the education fund, that's primarily out-of-district spatial ed money that we receive as essentially a pass-through, that we receive the money, and then we're required to more or less pass along to the out-of-district schools. And then we have other, which is very insignificant, and that's some district fees, such as memberships to School Board Association, for example. And then some bank fees and some minor things like that. And then we have $16 million that are projected for this year, transfers from the education fund to the operations fund. And so from an accountant's standpoint, that's a transfer, which is really seen differently than an expenditure, but it looks a whole lot like an expenditure in the sense of reducing the amount of money that otherwise is in the edu, that initially comes in the education fund. Then the operations fund, revenue again is primarily property tax and then excise tax, and so it's, the funds are all local, nothing coming from the state. We get a bit of miscellaneous revenue from building rentals, and as you know, we have a partnership with the city where they use our refueling stations, and so they, of course, reimburse us for that. And then we have the transfers, which are the expenses that previously were in the general fund. Then expenditures, we have, still have salary and benefits. That's primarily from transportation fund, and then we have some maintenance staff and maintenance staff and technology staff that previously were paid out of the capital projects fund. And then we, under purchase services, that's, that would be buildings and grounds, maintenance, if we're doing construction projects, and then utilities. Previously, a part of our utilities were paid out of our capital fund, a little more than half, and the other half was paid out of the general fund. Now, of course, they're all paid, all the utilities are paid out of the operations fund. And then we have some, again, the terminology of supply and property. All of our technology that previously was from the capital fund, of course, school buses, fuel, and then maintenance of equipment. That's, that's maintenance of not only things like technology, but also facility-type equipment that we, if we had contracts on air handlers, for example. So with that, if I can figure out how to do this, I'll go to the, well, first, let me stop there and see if there are questions, and then I'll go to the financial report.
Well, first of all, thank you, Roger, for helping us learn this new reporting system. I appreciate the comment again. We've heard over and over again that there's no new money, just how we're reporting it. Also, thank you, Pam, for the questions in advance. Thank you, Roger, for answering those. If Pam, any other questions that you have that you didn't already cover or new questions.
I'm sorry. I was just wondering, when the utilities came out of the CP fund?
Yep.
That came from property taxes?
Yes.
So are we continuing to pay that portion through property taxes? Or is it all coming from the money we're getting from the state?
No. We're continuing to pay it from property taxes, essentially in the same amount that we did previously. So in our case, we were, the amount we were receiving from property tax for utilities was about $2.3 million, and that was frozen several years ago, as you probably know. And so the amount was frozen, but the utilities weren't frozen, so that, so that pays a smaller percentage every year. But that's, that levy and that portion of it continues to come now through the, it's, they've been combined essentially, so it shows up as the operational fund levy, but it was a combination of that levy and the CPF and so forth. So, so yes, the amount of expense that previously was paid from the general fund is now still paid from the education fund, because we simply, we still spend the $2.3 million, and then when that runs short, in the past, we would have then paid whatever was beyond that from the general fund. Now we're doing the very same thing, except it's the education fund.
So could, is there a way to, now that it's all in the operations fund, is there a way to increase the property taxes that pay for the utilities so we don't have to use the money that comes from the state to pay that?
Yeah. I wish there was, but the answer is no.
No.
In fact, any levy that we have for the, well, the levy we have for the operation fund, we, we're receiving the max that's permissible under the law. We're not required to, by the way. You could choose to approve a levy that was less than what was available, but of course, what's available is really not as much as we'd like to have and could use. So that's not likely something you'd want to do. But we are receiving the maximum amount of money from, from local sources and state sources, for that matter, that we're eligible to receive.
Roger, could you remind all of us, especially those who might be watching, how we came about with the funds, the amount that we transferred, that the Board had a resolution to transfer to the operations fund?
Yes. What we did, what I recommended to you and the superintendent, was that I felt that this first year for sure, with all this change and realizing that there's no more money, there is more flexibility, because you don't have to transfer. And so these new funds do provide more flexibility, but also more responsibility along with the flexibility. So my recommendation, and the Board essentially, you know, approved that, was that we should, we should transfer the expenses that were required to transfer and then transfer the same amount of revenue. So basically, the revenue is following the expense. And so we're not transferring less, but we're also not transferring more, certainly not transferring more. And the amount that we arrived at, it was just based on our budgeting and our, you know, our projection based on previous year's expenditures and really projected expenditures, which we always do as we build budgets. And so we just took that portion of that budget that previously would have been the general fund and projected it over. And what we're doing is we're transferring that monthly exactly to reflect the expenses. And then when we get to December, that last month, we'll, we'll kind of true it up as to whatever, whatever it finally turns out to be. So it won't be exactly $6.1 million or whatever, you know, the exact dollar that we projected, undoubtedly, but yeah, I'm sorry, $16.1. So, but, but in the, by the end of the year, the intent is to transfer the amount of money equal to the expenses that we've transferred.
At the state level, they're talking 85.15?
Yep.
All right. So we're not anywhere near the 15 at this point, or are we?
Well, depends what your definition of near. We're about 16%, a little over, but about 16%. But in a district our size, that's close to $1 million. And so some of us find it...
...that's what goes through?
Yep.
Then we need to fix our $16.1 million and change that?
No, we don't. I don't think it's broken to begin with, but that proposed language is a recommendation. But if you don't follow the recommendation, you're put on the naughty list. And so, but at this point, if it were approved, it would be strictly proposed or recommended, it's a recommendation, but those that do not meet the 15% are put on a very public list so that everybody can see that, that you've transferred more, essentially the message is you're transferring more dollars away from the classroom into non-classroom expenses. Some of us feel that that decision would be more appropriate to be handled at a local level by elected officials that, that perhaps know what they feel is best for their community.
I can't help myself. Sorry. But the, part of this is that, and we've been very busy legislatively this session, there's a lot of things that were required by law, by the legislators, that we have to pay for. And, and that's going to be money that we have to transfer from the educational fund. So these unfunded mandates cause us to be out of balance. So, you know, one of the strategies, we've been talking quite a bit with legislature, is look at all the inefficiencies that we have to deal with. And now we're going to be put on the naughty list because we're off a percentage point, but we're off the percentage point because we have no choice but to take money out of the classroom to cover these expenses. So it's a kind of a shell game of sorts, but just rest assured, we're being responsible with the funds that we have here at Carmel Clay Schools.
Okay. I'm going to add one more comment to that. I can't help myself. I can't help myself. I, it's kind of a tag-team effort. I will assure you in the community that Carmel's schools operationally are as efficient, if not more so than, pretty much, I'd put us up against any district in the state for a number of reasons. The first is, is as we all know, we have large schools, as far as the enrollment in each school, large high school, way more efficient than if, you know, if you had three high schools with 5,000 kids. To operate that is, it's way more efficient in terms of custodial services and all the things that we're transferring, in other words. Much more efficient, the larger, the school district. Our schools are also in very good condition and, which means that utilities and so forth are less than they are in other less fortunate communities. There is a huge difference between what really is needed across 300 different school districts in terms of, you know, the operational expenses. And so, so to put out something that says 15% is the magic number, in my mind, is really presumptuous, at least. So in some ways, I'm, you know, I was surprised that we were over the, whatever the mark was, because there won't be very many school districts that are transferring a whole lot less unless they, unless they are really depriving those support areas that many of us think are absolutely also necessary to deliver a really good educational program.
Any other questions? Now, thank you, Roger. Now onto the financial update.
Okay. So first with the education referendum fund. You've seen this one before. It looks very similar to the, to the general fund last year in the education, and it's somewhat comparable. Not to... it's somewhat comparable, not totally, because it is, there are the changes and the transfers and so forth. But I went through the other information and pointed out the revenue, and how some's regular and some's not, and you can see it here. And so, of course, by February, we've received no property tax, or excise tax, or any other local taxes, which is the beginning of the, you know, that's, so for one reason, you're going to continue to see that our cash balance, and then if you get down at the end, the cash balance will drop, as it did last year, and, and then it will come back up, as we start to receive referendum revenue. And with our new referendum, we're receiving a little more money than we did with the old one, and so, that, that dip in cash balance, because our current referendums is a couple percentage points more to our total operational funds or education fund than the old one. So, so, so what you're seeing there is, is very expected. If you look, however, I'll point something out to you. If you, if you compare this February with last February, you'll see that we're, we've, we've dropped somewhere around $1.8 million in, in cash, which is more than we did the year before. And the reason is this, I'm going to flip forward here, if I can do this real quick. Okay, so, this is 2018, and I want to draw your attention to, to December under benefits. And you'll see that the, the expense, all the way over, almost to the, over to the right, in December, our benefit expense was $1.5 million, and that's less than you'd see the previous month. And the reason for, so that's, again, we transfer money from, from the general fund, now the education fund, to the insurance fund. So, it's not an expense from an accountant's standpoint, because the expenses have already been paid for the premiums and the, al the insurance fund. But we, we transfer our share of that cost over to that fund. And in December, we, we carried forward about $800,000 of that transfer, because we had, we had the cash, but we didn't have the appropriation. And, and it gets to be an involved story as to why not. But when we, when we started paying our, our early retirement program, you remember, that's now paid from, from the education fund, or really, the referendum fund. And we, we accounted for that with the new referendum. But, but in 2018, we paid 18 months of that by, by design, because we went back and paid from July 1 to December 31. And so, long and short of it, that transfer, and that 18-months expense caused us to run short of appropriation, not cash. So, so, the important balance now for us is not December, December 31 anymore, like it used to be, because we're, from a bargaining and contract standpoint, we're, we're operating on a fiscal year, July 1 to June 30. So, so, when we do those transfers, from the, internally, it doesn't, doesn't really matter, as long as we do them. So, so, it's a long-winded say of saying that, that if you were to really look at those two balances, you might be concerned that we dropped even more this year than we did last year, but that's why, because we're now catching up with that carryover. And, so, so as we move forward now, to June 30, which, which would be the end of our fiscal year, that, that all kind of levels out, and then we'll get our referendum funds, and it'll bring that balance back up to what it was, or what it, approximately what it was a year ago. So, beyond that, we're, we're really tracking close to where we would expect to be. Again, this is in the context of, of about $106 million a year, and so, month to month, it'll, it, you know, it's not going to ever be an exact comparison, because, because there is kind of movement inside of that $106 million worth of expenditures. So, if you have no questions on the education referendum fund, then I'll move on to the operations fund. Okay, so, the operations fund, you've not seen this before, or at least, we've not discussed it publicly. But, so now, I'm going to present the operations fund, and, and we're now comparing it to, to those three other funds, plus the transfers. And so, we were able to, to combine 2018 CPF transportation, bus replacement. And so, that's as close as we could come this year to a comparison. Next year, we'll have operations fund compared to operations fund, but this year, we're comparing it to those combined previous 2018 funds. Now, those funds, the operations fund, as you can see, is, is essentially, almost totally local resources, primarily property tax and excise tax. And so, what you'll see with this fund is, in, in January, we, you know, we had a, we started with a $6 million cash balance, we ended with a $4 million. Now, by February, we're down to 2.3. This fund, unlike the other funds, the education fund, you'll see this fund actually, it'll run in the red, because we're making expenses, if you think about transportation every day, you think about facilities, and we're doing maintenance, and all the expenses associated that would have come from the capital projects fund, we're making those all year long. Some of those will, will increase in the summer, because we're doing construction projects and things, when, when the students aren't here. But, but this operations fund will actually run in the red, which, and then we routinely do inter-fund transfers. And then, but by the time we do receive the property tax, then it all, you know, goes back out, or goes back up. And, so that's one thing that will cause, make it very difficult to compare and make any sense out of it, at least from one year to the next. And the second thing is, is, is the transportation, if you were just looking at that, that's somewhat comparable year to year, like, like the old general fund. But the capital projects fund really isn't. We could be, and now, the operations fund is part of that. So, we could be accumulating cash to do a, a larger project, we could start certain expenses, certain projects while schools in session, and, and one year is compared to the next, or we might have a project that's, that can, takes longer than a year. So, so the flow of, of expenses from this fund will be much, it'll vary a lot more from year to year, at least has that potential, as compared to the education fund. So, that, I'll conclude my report.
Any questions? Okay. I, I do have a question. Obviously, we've always had, in the funds, cash balances that go up and down.
Mm-hmm.
And in the past years, we've not seen, the report to us-
Yes.
-the cash balance. So, now, this, if we add the two cash balances, that's really a more true position, a rec, position's not, but more, better showing of where our, where we are financially, in terms of, that we know, you know, we're going to go up and down, but how up and down we are in all of our funds, not just in what we had before.
Well, almost. In fact, I've got two other reports that are still new enough to me, that I've neglected to share them with you. But, and the, so, we, we have the bank reconciliation statement, and so, this actually shows the actual cash ending February, which is just over $33 million. And so, a large chunk of that is not in any of the funds I just presented. It's in the debt service fund. And so, with the debt service fund, we, in older bond issues, we were permitted to carry a 50 percent cash balance, because we paid debt payments twice a year. And, and the logic was, is we want you to have, we want you to have enough to pay that first payment in January, we do not, because we, because the state backs our bonds, and they, they don't want us to be in default. And so, so, historically, we, we were permitted to carry, as I said, 50 percent of, essentially 50 percent of the annual payment. So, in our case, that was about $9 million, depending on the amount of bonds that we had out there and so forth. So, so this $33 million is now all funds. It's, it's certainly the education fund and the operations fund, but it's also any grants that we have, any federal money for special education, debt service, so it's all of our funds. And then, you can see here, it's, so that's, that's our cash, overall, truly our cash position by the end of February. And then, this is a back, this is kind of the detail that backs that up from the, the book balance. And, we also, we manage, this was, this was a report out of our system, in January, or last month, I presented this, and it was like six pages, but four pages were zeros. And so, that didn't, that wasn't a problem for us, but just, if we're going to present it publicly, we managed to take the zeros out, and get it down to just two, you know, to two pages. So, this actually shows the, the book balance for every fund that we have.
Okay. Any other questions?
Pam?
Yeah. On the education fund, can you, can you explain the out-of-district special ed-
Yes.
...expense that we have?
Yes. That could be essentially transfer tuition, but if, for example, if we have a placement of a student that essentially is, is, is put in a placement that's outside of our school district, we couldn't meet the needs of that child, then that would be an example where, where we're going to, we're going to pay that expense.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah. And Amy's pointing out, it's also the non-public school. That's several hundred thousand dollars that comes in, and then we pass it, it passes through us, onto the, to the non-public schools.
Right, so that's not our responsibility-
Correct.
-comes from the state, and then they-
It's, yes, we're just kind of the middleman in terms of the money. They send us the money, we, you know-
But that's good to know, at least that's not unfunded.
Correct.
Thank you, Roger. Next on the agenda, we move to superintendent's report.
Thank you. First off, I want to thank Roger. I had asked him to, to do a little tutorial, because, you know, the reports look so much different, and I think he did a good job kind of tracking for, for all of this, that, you know, the income comes in in different waves throughout the year. So, if, as the cash balance dwindles, that doesn't mean that we're going broke, it just means we're waiting for the next, you know, the next time that the, the money comes in. And this is going to be a lot different for a little while, because we won't be able to compare it, especially that, you know, the operational side is going to be difficult to compare, because of all those funds, or you're used to seeing those six silos, and now, you're only seeing a couple. So, it'll be a little bit of a change, but we wanted you to, you know, to have a clearer understanding what these charts are about. And, and if you have any questions as you go through those, we'll be glad to, to work with you on those and get them straight. Also, I wanted to just, I know they left already, but a little shout-out to the three people that did the fine job on the vaping presentation. This has been something I'm very fearful of, and it is an epidemic, and it reminds me of the old days, back when, I think the gentleman's name was Wagon, who blew the whistle on the tobacco industry, because they were targeting our children. Because, and they actually had reports where they were replacing the people who died, so they had to get younger, you know, younger smokers to replace, so they could keep their bottom line right. And, this is right up in that same way, where they're targeting our children, you know, with addictive substances in order for financial gain, which I think is just detestable, and we've got to make a stand. And, and, and one other plug I'll just put in is, you know, the plan is to launch this parent resource center, where parents can get good, accurate information that's relevant to their kids and them. And, and also, there'll be resources on there where you can get help, and where we can network as parents to, to support each other, as well as support our kids. Because sometimes I think we, as parents, feel like we're in a, you know, we're in a silo of our own, and we don't want to, you know, we don't, either don't want to reach out, or, you know, don't think that there's help out there, when in reality, there's a lot of us sitting out there alone, feeling all alone, when we're all going through the same thing. So, I think this parent resource center online space will be a good place, where people in the privacy of their own home can go and get good, solid information, and also have resources for help right there at the same place. We found over the years that parents tend not to, everybody's so busy, or whatever the, the nature of it is, when we're doing pretty touchy topics, there's not a whole lot of parents that show up for those. So, this is a way you can get information in the privacy of your own home, and get good, solid information. And we plan to expand that in a lot of different directions. I think it'll be a positive thing for our community, and for our parents, and of course, for our kids. So, I really appreciate that, and us getting out ahead of that, and I appreciate the board's support in that as well. I got a, I got a great report. I tell you, it's been a wonderful week at Carmel Clay Schools, wonderful two weeks. But, first one I want to tell you about was this really cool thing that happened, where Carmel High School students and parents learned about in-demand, high-wage career opportunities at this, at the Carmel High School Skilled Trades Majors and Careers Fair, it was held on March the 19th. So, this fair was actually open to all high school students in Hamlin County, and there's about 70 company booths at the event, so students could learn about all kinds of particular companies. They even had additional breakout sessions, and one included high-demand career outlooks, so what careers look like, and what employees are looking for in employee. It was very well-attended, I think there's 300, 300 kids or so that came to that. So, that was a pretty, pretty nice thing for, you know, to host here at Carmel Clay Schools. Good news, fresh off the press, the Carmel Clay Boys and Girls Track Team competed at the Hoosier State Relays this past weekend, and the boys' team captured the indoor state title. So, they, they won it, so they're the state indoor champs. That's a, it's a meet that goes, there's several qualifiers that go on for months and months, and then the qualifiers, they take the, the top qualifiers, and they, they compete in that. It's a little different kind of track meet, because the relays count double. And, so, it's a really nice, nice competition, but gives us a little sneak peek that we've got some solid track and field coming on. Girls did pretty well, too. I don't remember exactly what they placed, but it was like in the top 10 or 12, or something like that. I want to bring to everybody's attention the Carmel Youth Assistance Program, which is an incredible partner for Carmel Clay Schools, and had a big positive effect on the families and students that are, are going the wrong trajectory. But they're having their third annual Karma Gala on April the 13th, and this year's theme is Design Bright Futures, which is really what they do. And all the proceeds from this event go to Carmel Youth Assistance Program, and it will support at-risk youth and their families. With coordinating prevention services, they do things like tutoring, mentoring, mental health counseling, pro-social activities, food and clothing assistance, I think everybody knows about the summer lunch program, financial assistance, if, you know, we need to get water turned on, or heat turned on. They just do a lot of things. So, we'll send out some ticket information in our board recap, but I'd encourage anyone to get behind, you know, to purchase a table for that event, or to attend. It's really something special. I've said it over and over again, but in this, my 36th year in education, I don't know of any partnership I've had that's had more positive impact immediately on families that are in need. So, it's a good thing. Fun thing is, do you guys watch The Voice? You know, that's that TV show, The Voice, and I'm not a big authority on that or anything, but a former Carmel High School graduate, David Owens, was on The Voice on Monday, and he, he crushed it. I watched the video of him, and he's a former ambassador in our choir program, and Kelly Clarkson, I guess, it's kind of like, I guess they're not looking at the people, they're just listening to them sing, and if they like them, they kind of push a button, and their chair spins around. And Kelly Clarkson spun her chair around, and she picked David. And so, he's going to advance. Really cool thing is that David's mom, Becky Owens, is a teacher at Carmel Middle School. So, you know, as he continues on the, his journey here on The Voice, we're going to keep an eye on him. But I tell you, the guy can sing, he really crushed it. And so, we're, the Carmel community, we're proud of David, and we wish him well. Along the music line, the Carmel Middle School 6th, 7th, and 8th grade chamber orchestras all earned gold ratings with the Rare and Coveted with Distinction Honor. So, that's like the highest you can get, you know, on these ratings, and that's at the ISMA Organizational Festival. So, 7th, 8th grade and chamber orchestras all performed in Division 1, which is the most rigorous division. Chamber orchestra even performed their entire program from memory with no music. This is middle school. So, these guys are off the charts. And, so, the Carmel Middle School orchestras, in an unprecedented manner, have earned straight gold with distinction honors for four straight years. It's, it's such a quality program, it's hard to believe that they could pull that off. So, anyhow, orchestra, you know, if you wonder when you go to high school, why the strings are like going to the Philharmonic, it's because in middle school, they're knocking it out with no music. We want to congratulate Orchard Park student Raya on winning the 2019 Hamilton County Spelling Bee. So, the corny thing, I think Courtney, did you write this, "We couldn't be prouder of you"?
Yeah.
But her hard work has paid off, and she will now be in the Scripps National Spelling Bee. So, so Orchard Park kid brought it, and she's a steely-eyed speller, and she's going to represent Carmel in the National Spelling Bee, so we wish her well, too. I had the opportunity last Friday to go to the Creekside Cultural Fair, which is really neat. 1,300-plus students and staff enjoyed learning about different cultures, the importance of equity, inclusion in the classroom, the workplace, and the world. Team Lily showed up, from Eli Lily Company, and we had volunteers from Eli- Team Lily showed up, from Eli Lilly Company, and we had volunteers from Eli Lilly that came in, and did a really nice job in delivering engaging, hands-on presentation on diversity and inclusion. We also had A period C period, it was ACT OUT, and I think it's an acronym, the ACT part. But it's an ensemble that came, and they performed, and really kind of good a performance that our kids were able to think critically about different social situations, and how different cultures and races, and how that can fit in. And sometimes we can do things that, not on purpose, that could not be very positive for other people from other situations. So really neat, interactive. And the gym was, they had the gym lined with folks from all kinds of different cultures, from countries to religions to all kinds, it was just an amazing collection. And the kids were just going table-to-table and rotating around costumes, and, you know, all kinds of traditions were explored. It was very, very good, well-done. So I want to thank all the parents and visitors who helped our student learn, our students learn about their respective cultures and their heritage, and just a really good day of learning about how to understand each other better. So I just had to pick a bell ringer, and I really struggled, because there's a couple of things that went on. I went to the show choir performance on Friday night, and I've been wanting to see those shows, because they've been like winning everywhere. They won in Ohio, and they won in Nashville, they've been, they're just winning all over the place. And I heard so much about the programs, so I was able to go on Friday night, because they did a special performance on Friday and Saturday for all of us here back home, because I traveled so much. And it was amazing. So the first one was New Edition, and it was like, their performance was, it was like a big dad joke. You know, I'm like, it was called The Bunny Show. And the first thing you see is all these kids, the men had on, you know, like light-blue seersucker suits. And when they turned around, there was a bunny tail on their suit coat. And then the girls had, you know, really cute pink outfits on, when they turned around, they had little bunny tails on their skirts. And you're kind of like, what is going on here? And they were singing all kinds of popular songs, but everywhere it was changed to something about bunnies. And so, my best example is they did a very stirring love song, and it was very emotional and very well-done. And then they all went, "I love my carrot." And they all had carrots in their hands, and I was like, this is like a dad joke on wheels here. It was really, really cute and very clever. And then the accents did, "You belong among the wildflowers," and it was like I went back in time to the 70s, with, and 60s and 70s with the Flower Children. And they did a really, it was very, very clever. And they were probably a really big, they won a lot in a lot of different places, just because it was so artistic, and of course, the music's amazing. And then the ambassadors did Once Upon a Time, which featured three princesses, or four, I'm sorry, four princesses. And I don't understand a lot about show choir, but they were going so fast and so hard, I don't understand how they could even breathe to sing. And then, on the other hand, I was, their hands were flying so fast, I was wondering that someone would get their eye poked out. But they are so precise and so perfect, it was just amazing. So anyhow, it was a, you know, it was a really, really special to watch them do that, and I was really, really impressed. There's one other thing that happened this weekend, I'm trying to remember what it was, it's on the tip of my tongue.
Basketball?
Oh. Yeah, that was it. Yeah, yeah. The Carmel High School Boys Basketball Team went to the bank, Bankers Life Fieldhouse. And I got to tell you, this is a special group of young men, I really got, I got to know them a little bit over the season. And they, they're just a group of very different kids, and that just meshed together and perform at a very high level. And one of the things I shared with them, I was able to talk to them on Wednesday night during their practice, before their practice, and I said, you know, one of the most wonderful things is you go into these competitions, and if you just don't worry about winning or losing, focus on just doing your best. And if you do your best, success will take care of itself. And then what I didn't share with them is, the greatest thing in competition, I think, is that when you do your very best, when it counts the very most. So with everything on the line, they played their best basketball on Saturday night, and beat a very, very good Ben Davis team. And the reason they did it was because they played together, very unselfish. And, you know, it was funny, they were talking about the scorers, and we had three kids that were all right around 13, 14 points, you know, and the other fourth one was like, you know, it was just all spread out. It's because they play as a team. And I was just so impressed by them and the coaches, and so it was a really good night to be a Greyhound. And just, I think that was the best season record in school history. And it was the 149th state championship for Carmel Clay Schools, and it was our sixth one of this year. So there's some pretty impressive kids and coaches, and the community and the parents, it was just a real special, special time. And for me, as a first-year guy, I was just, you know, I was like a kid in the candy store, I just kept looking around, and, you know, thousands of students, you know, there was a blackout game, they all had on black clothes, and they, as far as you could see in Bankers Life, and they're for their classmates. And so a special group of kids, a special night. Congratulations to the Carmel Boys Basketball Team, state champs. That concludes my report.
Well, thank you, Dr. Beresford, again, for a very informative report, and for being out there and being seen and being amongst the community. Next, we have a couple of board members' reports. First is legislative update, Mrs. Spanenberg.
Given the time, I will be as brief as possible. I did share with everybody the legislative update. Couple of things I wanted to just point out, we have been through both the House and Senate, new money coming from House Bill 1001, or 1,001. New money doesn't equate to inflation, but it's still some new money. We won't know officially until the end of the session. The official end of session is 4/26 of 19, but it can be extended through Monday, the 29th of April, should it need to be. Some other highlights to pull out, especially since we did receive the grant from the Education Foundation for Stop the Bleed Kits, House Bill 1,063, or 1,063, the school safety equipment. There's a bill that pertains to the stop bleed kits, their use, and how we publicize that, and training. Some other highlights, the school referendum levy, Senate Bill 127 is still out there. One that I know, we were working towards, the tax credit for classroom supplies. Of the many that were out there, there is still one that is still out there from RATS, Senate Bill 362, which will allow our employed teachers to credit, get a tax credit, which is currently $100 up to $500. And one that I threw in here, which, for whatever reason, it just popped on my radar, Senate Bill 383, it's called Air or Gas Apparated Weapons on School Property. I bring that up because it's springtime, and there are a number of kids who run around with airsoft guns and just have fun, and my kids included. But you can't do that on school property. So there is a bill out there that you will get a, it'll be a Class B misdemeanor if you are caught on school property playing with your toys. So, anyway, I'm sure it's not for that reason, but I think our students might, especially our middle schoolers, that is something I think that we should maybe advertise, should this bill make its way through. But if you have any questions, please feel free to give me a call or send me an email. Thank you.
Thank you for the report. Thank you for tracking all the legislation and keeping us on top of that. We have on the agenda a Parks Department report, but I don't think we have one. And then, I just want to take two seconds to say that on March 12th and 13th, I had the privilege of attending the Carmel Clay Parents Safety Academy. And as we've already seen this evening, our district is very fortunate to have people like Dave Woodward, Shane Benatar, DJ Schaff, that make our district a better place. The academy provided great information about what we're doing for our students and our staff, and how to be safe in all types of emergencies, natural disasters, and other things like that. And it allowed parents an opportunity to provide feedback and suggestions. We did, we got to see some drills and role-playing and that type of stuff. So I would encourage all Carmel Clay parents to be on the lookout for the next time that is being offered, and sign up. It is two nights, two hours, but it is a very informative and very important program. The last thing we have on the agenda is announcements. Our next board meetings, our April 8 is our board workshop, April 22 is our school board regular session. I'm sure nobody's counting down that Friday we start spring break, so I'd like to wish all of our families, students, staff, a safe spring break if they're traveling, and if not, to enjoy the time off. And with that, and noting the time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sounds good.
Thank you. So adjourned.